Jason Blair.
Yeah.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
David Roberts. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May 7th, 2012. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the joint budget study session held April 30th, 2012. Item C is approve certificate of plat correction for Royal Rock addition, section four located in the southeast quarter of section 22, township 10 North, range three West by correcting the labeled dimensions of lots three, four, and five of block one. Item D is approve certificate of plat corrections for cider farms addition, section two located in the northeast quarter of section 31, township 10 North, range two West by correcting the north boundary of lines of lot one through 24 of block four, decreasing lot depths by approximately one foot to match the existing fence line. Item E is accept a quitclaim deed from 1935 LLC for certain real property located in the part of northwest quarter of section 26, township 10 North, range three West. Item F is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2011-2012 in the amount of $4,446,294.87.
Move to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items or any claims, questions, or changes or notes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Item three is review, discuss, and receive citizen input and comments regarding the fiscal year 2012-2013 budget as required by 11 Oklahoma statutes 17-208, 1992.
Mayor and council, we are here to present the FY 1213 budget to you tonight. It totals 87.9 million. The budget is balanced and it fully complies with the Municipal Budget Act of the state of Oklahoma. There are no new positions in this budget, but there are many capital items planned. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. This is the identical budget that you saw at the study session a couple of weeks ago. Nothing has changed since then.
Any questions by anybody? Any citizens have any questions, comments? Okay, in that case, I declare the hearing closed. And Randy, do we need to take a vote on that? It has an action item, but does it really call for a vote?
No.
Okay. All right. At this time, okay, thank you. At this time, we'll recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number four is consider approval of FY 2012-2013 annual budget and adopt resolution number 73912. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion when we approve the budget.
All right, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on this? It's been a lot of time on it. We have a motion in a second. If there's no other comment, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. We now have a budget. At this time, we'll recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council. Let's see if we've done that, I'm sorry. Item five is consider the final plat for Fritz Farm addition, section two located in the northeast corner of section 27, township 10 North, range three West being south of southwest 19th Street and west of Telephone Road, application by Fritz Farm Development Company, LLC, Terry Fritz. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, seven to nothing, and this is in Ward Three.
Mayor and council, this final plat consists of three commercial lots on 16 acres. There is no flood plain located on the property and detention is required and is provided by an off-site detention pond to the south of the subject property. Water and sanitary sewer are available and will be extended through the site and access is proposed from southwest 19th Street. Cross-access easements are provided to access all of the lots within the development. And just for your information, this is the plat that Dix will be located on. It'll be located on lot one, the east half of lot one. This final plat is in keeping with the general conformance with the preliminary plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't think so.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Have they announced anything new going besides the Dix Sporting Goods?
Not yet.
Removing dirt, that's exciting. Okay, we have a motion in a second. No other comments? Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number six is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held May 7th, 2012. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the joint budget study session held April 30th, 2012. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2011-2012 in the amount of $1,902,059.7.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you, thank you both. Wait, everybody get their claims questions answered? Any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. And item seven under the MPWA is consider approval of the FY 2012-2013 annual budget and adopt resolution number 23212. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Same item as before, any discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. And I would like to say, I do this quite often, I tell people that we have all this information ahead of us, at least a week ahead of time, so if we have any questions or anything, we can call the city manager or staff and get our questions resolved. So if it seems like we go really faster in these things, it's because we do. It's because these guys do their homework and I really appreciate them. Thank you. At this time, we will call, let's see. At, we recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Public, or excuse me, the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item eight is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held May 7th, 2012. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the joint buddies, budget study session held April 30th, 2012. And item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2011-2012 in the amount of $183,811.64.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. And David's not here, so who's the vice chair?
I'm trying to remember who the vice chair is. Do we know? Actually, you're gonna take nominations for that.
It was Janey, so that position is vacated?
The secretary's cabinet.
Okay. Turn the meeting over to Kathy.
Thank you very much. Item nine is roll call.
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
David Roberts.
All members are present. Item 10 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held April 16th, 2012. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the joint budget study session held April 30th, 2012.
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Will you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 11 is consider and deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a chair of the authority.
I would like to nominate Terry Cavanagh as the chair.
Second? Any other selections? Call for the vote?
Who's second is that?
Kathy.
I did.
Oh. Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes. That nomination carries. Item 12, consider and deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the authority. Do I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Kathy Griffith.
Second?
Thank you. Any other selections? Call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Abstain. Item 13, motion carries. Item 13, consider and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the authority. Do I have any nominations?
Make a motion, Mark Ham to be secretary of the authority?
Have a second?
You need some job roles, don't you?
I'm gonna be all right.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second. Call for the vote?
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Abstain.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
And Kathy Griffith.
Yes. Nomination carries. At this time, I'd like to recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the minutes reflect that all the members that were here before are still here. Item number 14 is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have several people signed up to speak. Philip Mayer. I hope I said that right.
Yeah, I'm here to speak. We had members of the local union here come to our retirees' meeting and talk about how they have been trying to contact to start negotiations for their contract that is ending the end of June. And according to them, they're saying they're being ignored. Some phone calls not being returned. And I, I was just kinda wondering why with the ending of the contract so close.
Would you mind stating your name and address for the deal? I'm sorry.
My name's Phil Marr. I live at 1213 South Patterson. Lived there 32 years. And in Moore. And Ward One. And so, so that's why I'm here. I'm trying to help the, help, they asked if we would talk. And I've been a union member for 30-some years. I've been a union representative for 30, well, about 20 years. And so I have a lot of experience. My understanding is, is they wanna either force or dissolve, dissolve the union and have a labor management council or committee. And you made a point earlier about how fast everything's going. And it's because they know their jobs, they know what they're doing. And having me represent myself is difficult because I don't know the process of, let's say, this city council meeting. That's why I have Robert Kraus and David Roberts here to represent me. Because they know what they're doing. If I have an issue, it's easier for me, it's easier for you guys. If you, if you have somebody that understands the process, to voice my concern. You know, even in the, just about every contract, they have a purpose at the beginning of it and, and part of it is to promote harmony, dignity, and respect in the relations. And by forcing dissolve of the unions and, and not having that representative of people that I elect, because I elected Robert and David, they weren't appointed. So I feel when they talk to me, I could see by their demeanor that they did work for me rather than just be a, a, somebody to come and tell me some bad news that my issue wasn't really her. Because there's no accountability in a, in a appointed committee as there is an elected committee. So I just, I just want to ask your support as a citizen to, to, well, take their phone calls and set up meetings and get negotiations going. Hey, I like the way things are going. My garbage is picked up, my streets have been worked on. The morale must be high. I wanna keep that morale high. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Hadlock, I'm sorry.
Yes, my name is Michael Hadlock. My address is post office box 550, Tuttle, Oklahoma. I am chairman of local 1999 retiree chapter of General Motors. I represent 3,100 people. I have many, many, many people that live in the city of Moore. And they are, my people are upset. They think it's wrong. I stand before you as a, as a regular citizen, not of your community, but of my community. And I am no different and my members are no different than the city council members or anybody else that they're wanting to have a good job, a good paying job, good benefits so that they can go out and afford to do things and, and live, live a great life. The working class supports the country and, but they seem like everybody's against us, okay, for that. When General Motors shut down, of course, we had larger numbers than what you're dealing with, but when General Motors shut down, there were over 70-some businesses had to close their doors because they shut down General Motors. They shut down the union to try to get them out of town and it didn't work because we're still here. And my members have, have passed a resolution with my chapter to support, you ask a local 2406 in their endeavor to, to remain as a union, to represent the people and, and follow through with their problems that they have with the city council or, or the different departments. I think it's totally unfair that you, you recognize the firemen, you recognize the policemen, but you don't seem to recognize the rest of them. And I think that's totally wrong. I think that's discrimination. And I think that you ought to sit back and take a look and see what your responsibility is to the citizens of this community that have elected you all to represent them and to make sure they get the best services that they can and to lead a comfortable life, no matter what, what they do. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
David Johnson?
Well, guys, David Johnston, 713 Woodcrest, vice chairman of AFSMI 2406. As you're beginning to understand, Moore is a union town. Mr. Mayor, Jason. And the reason I'm picking on you is because you were part of the insurance committee. You got some insight into how that process works. And I, I appreciate your input on that. I appreciate you being there. Mr. Mayor, when I talked to you the other day, we talked about Moore being a union town and you gave the statistics to me about medical benefits.
Right, and health insurance benefits from hospitals.
Right. And I, and I don't remember the figures. Could you state them?
It's about 80% of the households in Moore have insurance and compared to Norman, which is about 20% households in Norman and about 20%, 18% in Oklahoma City, according to hospital studies.
And that is because of union membership. Union members have healthcare.
Well, it's also higher incomes.
Well, and, and yeah, and, and they do have higher incomes. And, you know, I have noticed that here lately, there are medical, oh my goodness, things popping up everywhere, doctors' offices and, and what is that thing down there on Telephone Road? It's a, is it some kind of a outpatient hospital or?
Surgical, surgical center.
And, you know, we, we have a nice hospital here. The eye doctor down there, that place down there is wonderful. They're springing up all over the place. Do you think they would be here if, if the people couldn't afford to go there? I, I really don't think so. I don't think they showed up here because Deidra is such a good person and so good at her job. I, I suspect she has something to do with that. That's all part of economic development, I would, I would assume. You know, that, it, it's just a, a union town. That's all you can say. We are a union town. There's union members all over this town. We have the Moore Association of Classroom Teachers. They're part of the OEA. UAW is here. The Professional Firefighters of Oklahoma. Brian Foudy called Mr. Edie today and gave his support to AFSMI.
He did in fact do that, so I did hear from Brian today.
Under the AFL-CIO, which is an umbrella organization with many unions underneath it. AFSMI is underneath the AFL-CIO, the AFGE, the AFT, the National Letter Carriers, the Brotherhood of Locomotive Engineers, steelworkers, teamsters, transport workers, communication workers. You know, there's, there's a list as long as my arm of the unions that are underneath the AFL-CIO and they have residents that reside in Moore. They spend their money in Moore. Some of the concerns that I talked about with you, Terry, were our numbers. We did lose some people at the beginning of the year. We're gaining those people back. I've signed two people up in the last two weeks. So, and, you know, our numbers have always been pretty much where they are now. Give or take a few, they fluctuate back and forth. But we do represent all the employees. You know, we, we have the best interests of not just the members, but all of the employees and their well-being. You know, there's been given to me a number of reasons why we aren't negotiating and one of them is our numbers. Another one is because we supported you. Let's be real, we bought a hundred signs. You knocked on the doors. You did the hard work. You did the legwork. You did the phone calls. You got yourself elected. You know? We didn't buy you. We, that, that's, that would be even kinda pretentious for us to even think that. And, and we do not. And, and I want you all to understand that. We talked to every candidate running for office. Now, you, you told me the other day, Mr. Mayor, that we supported those people. That is not true.
All I know is I've been getting phone calls, harassing phone calls, threatening my life. And I've asked the FBI to look into it because it is a federal offense to threaten a public employee or an elected official, as you know.
I don't know anything about that.
Your, your guy that came down from Tulsa said this is gonna be a war? You don't remember that?
I.
You don't remember that at all? I remember it.
I was not at that meeting.
Okay.
Was I?
I'm not sure, were you?
No, no, I wasn't. And, and I can't speak for what he said to you. What I do know.
He's the president of your union.
Well, if he said.
And things happen to me and my family, you know, it's like, that's pretty threatening, don't you think?
Well, yes, I agree. And, and I do not agree with those statements.
Well.
He, he might be a union representative, but he does not represent.
He doesn't represent the union?
Those words do not represent our point of view.
Well, I didn't say he was the one that actually called and threatened me on the phone with my life if I didn't agree to do whatever.
And I apologize for that. I, I had nothing to do with that.
I'm gonna tell you something else.
I don't condone.
I'm gonna tell you something else. When I got here as mayor, this entire city, except for the department of the city clerk, was privatized. Every single department was privatized. And we brought them all back. Do you remember that?
No, I do not.
Yeah.
I, I know that you brought them back.
Well, the teamsters are more than happy to take over the trash collection if you wanna go union on different departments. We can go department by department.
I would really prefer not to do that, but what I was trying to get across to you, Mr. Mayor, and, and if you've had threats made against you. I do not agree with that. Heavy-handed, strong.
Well, I don't agree with it at all either.
Strong-arm tactics is not the way to go. Negotiation is the way to go. What I was trying to say is that we did not support any of those people other than Mark Ham. We liked where he came from. He was well-spoken. He could carry on a conversation. The lady that ran against you, oh my God. The, the, the guy that ran against Mr. Roberts and, and Mr. Cavanagh could not formulate a sentence. We supported the incumbents that are sitting here today. And truly, if, I, I'm totally shocked about what you just told me. I had no idea. I don't lie.
I know that.
I, I'm.
You and I have had many conversations about this.
I am, and I'm totally abhorred by that. It's, it's not right.
This has gone past you. It's gone way past you. And like I said, I've asked the FBI to look into this matter and I hope they will.
Well, I hope they will too, because that's not right. What's right is right. What I'm, what I'm trying to do is something that's right. There's, there's right and there's wrong. And that is not right. And I do not condone it.
Okay.
And I'm sorry if you feel like you've been strong-armed because that is not our position. That is not our camera's position.
Well, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be strong-armed. I hold a position on, on the Homeland Security Board. If somebody gives me a hard time and they catch him, we're gonna send him to Guantanamo and beat him with rubber hose for a week.
I, I truly wish you had said.
But that would be as stupid as, as that guy calling and threatening me, wouldn't it?
Well, I don't know about that.
It is. And I don't appreciate it.
Well, let's talk about the local, let's talk about the local issue here.
That is the local issue. I'm local.
Well, I'm saying, let's, let's talk with Mr. David here and see what he has to say and just, just kinda calm down a little bit.
Now, I wanna talk to you further about that.
You haven't seen upset yet, buddy. I got words with you after this meeting. Sounds good. Sounds good.
I, I met with you at the picnic table. I did not mean to make you mad. I had a true concern. And the concern that I had was that you were putting the cart before the horse. Isn't that what I said?
Yes, it's not really an issue to be discussed here, David, I don't think.
Well, part of it is. Because an email was sent out, my people called me and they said, "Please, whatever you do, don't come down here. Our supervisor's on the warpath, and she's taking it out on us." That is not professional. That is not the way you should want your employees to be treated. Am I right?
I absolutely agree with that.
And, and because you don't want to discuss this any further on that subject, I will not. As far as the meetings go, the Labor Management Committee meetings that we had with Mr. Eadie and Kao about dispatch, they went nowhere. And the, the, we kind of feel like the meetings with the employees at lunch to air their grievances, open up a line of communication, we didn't feel like they were gonna go anywhere either. Because these people are not, um, they're, they're not negotiators. They don't know how to talk to you guys. They're intimidated by you guys. You know, I don't think they should be. You, you, you guys aren't scary. You know, you only want what's best for everybody. But, you know, we're trained to negotiate with you guys. We're trained to investigate incidences. And that's what we do. You know, you, you guys already have the infrastructure set up to talk with the employees. I'm part of that infrastructure. I'm the head steward of the union, besides being the vice chairman. And, and if I investigate something, if somebody comes to me with a complaint, I am going to investigate that complaint to the utmost. And you can ask Richard. He will tell you. I have gone in his office many times, and when I walk in his office, we're on equal grounds. When I sit down with you, Mr. Eadie, I feel like we're on equal grounds. Same way with you, Mr. Mayor, and, and any of you, Mr. Kraus. We're talking one-on-one. These, these employees don't have that. They, they don't. They don't, for one thing, they, they don't understand the philosophy of that, of being on an equal basis with management. And that's the way it has to be. You have to be equals to be able to talk to each other. You have to have a line of communication open to be able to talk to each other. Does anybody disagree with that?
Can I just ask a quick question? What are the grievances? Is it pay? Is it benefits? Is it hours? Is it work environment? I, I haven't heard from anyone. I haven't received a phone call nor an email. You and I have conversed a little bit back and forth, but I haven't really been-
We try and-
-given any information about what the grievance is.
We try and negotiate everything. Now, that's not being said that a grievance won't be filed when that negotiation process breaks down. Richard and I sat down after I did an extensive investigation in Public Works about the size of the routes, the, the condition of the trucks, the unhappiness of the drivers. And at that time, when was that, Richard? Two thousand nine? Two thousand ten? So, in, in that timeframe, I sat down with him and I said, "Richard, I don't think it'd be productive to file a grievance when there's another way around this." And we have been working towards that goal since that time. And it's gonna be a long, drawn-out process because trucks are not easily replaced. The routes are not easily changed. But we are working towards that process. I, I do have a class action grievance against communications. And it's because after a period of two years of not being able to get anywhere for these people, and we had a Labor Management Committee, and, and that went nowhere. And, and it's gone another year since then. And I believe you had to step in a couple of times just so an employee could get time off. Is that right?
I did.
And, and we appreciate that. But we should not have to go to that extreme. It, it's not Mr. Eadie's job to be involved in personnel matters to that extent. Don't you agree?
Well, it's my job to be involved in all personnel matters.
Well, I know, but the, the, the day-to-day-
I don't-
Need time off. I, you know, can I, can I take a break? You know what I mean? You know? I, I do realize that you're involved in personal matters every day. But, you know, the little day-to-day things that should be able to be handled between a supervisor and an employee, or the supervisor and a union steward, or the supervisor and a, a department head, there are certain steps that we should take before we ever have to go to Mr. Eadie. And, and that's one of the grievances that we, we have filed. And I can tell you this, I believe, now I might be mistaken because I don't have it in front of me, but there's only one contract violation in the grievance. Everything else in the grievance is a violation of the Personnel Policy Manual, which are the rules that the city set up for the employees to follow. Now, I, I just have to say that, you know, if you're not gonna follow your own rules and you're gonna make the rules up as you go, what's the point of having a Personnel Policy Manual? You know? I believe everything's negotiable. I, I, two other grievances that I filed this year, one was a wrongful termination. And because Bob got sick, that fell through the cracks. And, and I feel so badly about that because that little girl did not deserve to be fired. We feel like she was railroaded, she was never rode up. But, you know, that's pretty much all I can say about that. The other grievance I filed was on a merit raise. And the front page of the merit raise of his evaluation said that he was a good employee. And the rest of the evaluation trashed him. So, which is it? Is he a good employee or is he not? And we did actually get the man his merit raise. Those are the only grievances that we have filed, besides one back in, do you remember the year? Where, yeah, I don't either. And it went to arbitration, but before it went, before the arbitrator, we settled. It was a wrongful termination. The lady got her job back. You know, th- these, this grievance process is not only demanding on me, having to do the investigations, because I'm gonna be thorough. I, I want it to be right. I want it to be right on management's side. I, I want to see their point of view. I want to see the employees' point of view. And I want to find out what the facts are. Because that's only fair. And alls I'm talking about is fairness. That's all that it comes down to, ladies and gentlemen, is, is being fair, being able to stand up for these people when they're afraid to stand up for themselves. You guys got the audit. We, we had an audit done. And I can tell you the reason why we had the audit done. For one thing, the, the membership asked for it before we went into contract negotiations. Bob and I talked about it, and we did it. It's not a comprehensive audit. Alls it does is give the general health of the city. Anytime you enter into a partnership with somebody, don't you want to know where they stand? You're businessmen, Terry. Isn't that a fair statement?
Sure.
Mark? If you're gonna do business with someone, and you're gonna put in money, and they're gonna put in money, don't you want to know where they stand? I mean, you know, it, it only makes sense. That was the purpose of the audit. We, we didn't do it to get in your business. We just wanted to know.
Well, just, you know, briefly, before I was even a, a part of the council and would come to meetings and interested in city government, what we're spending our money on, I would go to Jim Corbett's office, or actually Jim Corbett himself, and just ask for a copy of the budget. And they gave it to me, everything that the current city council had. And I tried to do that at, at a county level, and I was instructed to go through the Open Records Act. So, my impression has been from our Moore municipal government has been very transparent.
They are.
And whatever, so it's, it's not getting in our business. This, all of this money is the people's money. And anybody in, in our community is welcome to comment, request copy.
And it's public record.
Well, you know, and, and I would have preferred to do it like that. I, I go to Jim all the time for, "Hey, Jim, you, you got the numbers on this?" I, I ask him something Friday. Some numbers on what the union costs the city this year. What AFSMI costs the city this year. I don't have the figures yet. He, he's had payroll to do today, and, you know, and he's been pretty busy, and I understand that. But have you got a guess?
I have partially started with it, and it's like I told you before, it's a few thousand dollars, but I, I don't have a fine, I'm yet.
And most of that, I believe, probably would have been on the grievances, which I would have preferred not to do at all.
Let me just say just a couple of, of quick things. You spoke for a little bit and, and given us a lot of information. And, you know, at this, at this, you sent me either a letter and email. I don't remember this past week wanting to know where I stood-
Yes, sir.
-in, in reference to the discussion that I've had with you. And I met me and the mayor and some of the other Union members met at Poblano's, I don't know, a couple of months ago or a month ago.
Right.
So, I think, you know, at least from my perspective, we've been open, and I wanted to hear. I went, met with our city manager, Steve Eadie, and Stan Drake, and went to the, the location up on Twenty-seventh Street, as well as some other facilities. And the only thing that I, I mean, it was a garage. It wasn't a nice painted floor, and it wasn't brand-new. It was a garage, it was clean. I did observe a break room that needed some attention. The city manager shared with me that we are moving forward on doing some improvements at those places. I haven't seen what those are, but we're going that way. You're well aware of the fire stations and the Public Works Building and all of those things that have taken place. So, that stuff is in the making, and those things are gonna happen. Where I stand, at this point, I'm with, I'm with my mayor, and I'm gonna stand behind him and support him. But I always have an ear, and if there's ever anything that's going on that is wrong, that people are being treated unfairly, there's a process that you can currently go through to ensure that those things are being met. I've asked for the Personnel Policy Procedure Personnel for the City of Moore. The city manager gave me that. I haven't read through all of it, I'm about halfway through. And there, there is procedures in place for employees to, if they feel like they're being treated unfairly, there's things in place that they can do. Moore is, is a great city. And if you're fortunate enough to get to work here, it's a great place to work. It's, has better benefits and better pay than the place that I work at full-time. So, I'm not sure exactly what a union is going to be able to do. I mean, if, if the union isn't here tomorrow, you know, you're, you're not gonna be cut to minimum wage. We're not gonna get rid of everybody. You know, the city depends on its employees to run it and to operate it, and everyone knows that. And the way to keep good employees is to take care of good employees. And we do that by paying them well and providing good benefits. And, and Moore has great ben, a great benefit package and pays well.
Can I answer that? The reason why there's a need for someone like me is because when it comes right down to it, if a department head doesn't like what they're hearing, and, and these words were spoken to somebody who was prodded and prodded and asked and asked for their opinion, and when they gave their opinion, the department head said, "If you feel that way, why do you even work for the city? Why don't you go to work somewhere else?" Now, you can't say that to me as a union official because I'm on equal grounds with you, where the employee is not. And the employee has no recourse at that point. Don't you agree?
Well, there, there are policies in place for the, anybody that works here, what they can-
I, I agree there, that there are. But more often than not, the policies and procedures in that manual are ignored by department heads and supervisors. The union contract pretty much mirrors the Personnel Policy Manual. It, it really does. They're just about two sides of a coin, for the most part.
There, there are, there are a little over a hundred employees are eligible to be a part of-
There's ninety-two eligible employees.
Ninety-two? And, and how many are a part of it?
I believe I'm up to forty-three.
Okay. And to me, that just says a lot.
But if you stop and think about it, Mark, of the three hundred city employees, one hundred and eighty-nine of them are Union members. Don't, don't break us up into categories. We're all Union members. Police, fire, and AFSMI, non-union for us. We're all Union members. So, when you, if you look at it like that, there's more Union members employed by the City of Moore than there are non-Union members. And that's a fact.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if there's anything I can do to aid you in this investigation, I wish you would call me because I do not condone those kind of actions. I sincerely do not condone that. It's wrong. What's wrong is wrong. It's wrong, what's wrong is wrong, and you can't change that.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thanks. Jill Dudley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jill Dudley. I'm representing the Moore Association of Classroom Teachers. We're located at three-two-one Northwest First Street. Um, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about public sector bargaining. Um, the Moore Association of Classroom Teachers on Thursday will open negotiations with the Moore Board of Education for the thirty-fifth consecutive year. So, we're obviously the old hands at this. We, we've been at it a long time. And of those thirty-five years, I personally have been involved in the negotiations process for eighteen of those thirty-five years. Don't want to date myself, or say how old I may be, but I will say that some of our members and people who have worked with us in the negotiations process are present in this room. In both directions here. But I, I am here tonight, um, and if you would permit me just a moment to draw, to tell you a little bit about what we've gone through in Moore Public Schools. In hopes that I can draw on analogy, that perhaps you can benefit from some of what we've gone through. Thirty-five years ago, when, um, the state passed public sector bargaining law, our association had been in existence for, well, it, back into the fifties. Many of you probably know Dora Hoppen. And, uh, you know, Dora, she was one of our presidents way back, way, way before bargaining, so we, we do go back a long ways. But once the state passed a collective bargaining law for public sector, our association, uh, requested to bargain with the district. And I have to tell you that for the first probably. Oh, I would say probably the first twenty years, maybe, it was pretty rough going. I mean, it was rough going. I know the mayor has expressed a concern about, very serious a concern about a threat. I'm sure that somebody back in the days of school board history could probably tell you some stories like that, too. But through the years, it has gotten so much better, and I know many of you probably know, we currently, and over the last few years, have had a wonderful relationship working with our Board of Education. And let me tell you how we got there. We got there because attitudes changed. We realized, both of us, both teams, the boards team and the associations team, that truly we are all in the same boat in education. And that when you have the different people in the boat, you know, be it the teachers, be it our support, be it our, you know, administration and our school board, we're all in that same boat. And in that boat, we have to row our oars in the same direction. Because if you got one over here going this way, and one over here going that way, what happens? Your boat goes in a circle, doesn't it? And so, what we found was to go forward and make progress, we had to get our oars all going the same way. And we did that because we developed a guideline, a standard, a yardstick, if you will. In public school, our yardstick is what is best for the children in Moore. What is best for the children? And when we are solving problems, when we are negotiating contracts, whatever the, and we do this daily, whatever we face, we face with that as our yardstick. I see an analogy here. I see some struggles here. I know AFSME has not been, um, a negotiating, uh, a, a, a union in, in the municipality, uh, very long. They're young, they're struggling. I liken it to the days when we were, had a young and what I call an immature contract. And it's rough at first. But I would encourage both parties, both the council and AFSME, to think about your boat. Your boat is important to those of us that receive services from the City of Moore. Because your yardstick, your, your measure, the direction you're rowing your boat in, is to provide the very, very best services you can for the citizens of Moore. And I would ask that you both realize that this process, it's not too late, that if cooler heads can prevail. That people can step back and say, you know, we've given these people a few years of, uh, chance to get started. And realize that if you take that away from them now, you're saying that they don't matter, that their worth and dignity don't matter. And so, I would say, let's approach, you don't want to chuck them out of the boat. Don't chuck them out of the boat. Keep them in your boat, let's get the oars all going in the same direction, let's find a way to provide the very best services for the citizens of Moore. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the people that are, oh, Troy Nelson has signed up. Yes, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Brows. I live at forty-eight twenty-nine Southwest One Hundred and Twenty-four in Oklahoma City. I'm Ashmead Local Twenty-four oh-six as union president. I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about the union and the grievances. We've had very small amount of grievances. I don't even think we've had two thousand dollars worth of business since this union formed. I'm a negotiator. I'm a negotiator in Oklahoma City. I was a negotiator in Edmond, Midwest City, all of those places. People that take care of Moore, Oklahoma, it's these people, the ones that keep the streets going, pick up the trash, keep these beautiful parks going. They have an investment in the City of Moore. They have an investment, they have an entire investment, investment in the City of Moore. That investment, they want to see the City of Moore be the best city that it can possibly be. I haven't ever really talked to Mr. Lewis, I haven't ever really talked to Mr. Edie. Because we try to sell our grievances at the lowest, lowest level, so it doesn't cost money. We don't file frivolous grievances. They do need protection. People need protection on the job. And the union is basically a divide between management and employees. To come to an equal agreement, so both sides can come back to an agreement, so that we can all go back to work. We like to try to take care of safety situations in how we work. We like good benefits. We should see the city grow, and our salaries will grow along with the city. We have had a great relationship with the City of Moore. There is no reason to discontinue this relationship. If any of you have talked or spoken together, you need to ask Mr. Edie exactly what the cost effect. Financially, has this union had a burden on the City of Moore? There has not been one, and I definitely don't believe it was two thousand dollars. Anytime we have a grievance process and it goes to arbitration, you guys pay half, we pay half. We get the closest arbitrator within driving distance, which is usually Dallas, Texas, or it's either, uh, Wichita. When we pay for that bag's pay, and we usually get it wrapped up, and we haven't had to do that. Now, I've never been to any one of you guys' offices, right? Because these people, this man knows what goes on in the City of Moore. William Brows, that, I'm kinda like a director. They call me, I give them advice on how they need to proceed. But this union has not been a burden. It's sad for the city council not to honor this union. This union is a good thing. It lets you know, each and every one of you know, that the business is being taken care of, that the citizens are happy, that the workers are happy. And they have a go-between for safety. I have not heard any one of you tonight say anything about discussions that you've had about the union. I have sent emails, our attorney has sent emails to Mr. Edie, we have not gotten a response. That's not good business. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that you got threatening phone calls, but I'll tell you what, Jim Couch. Jim Couch, city's councilman, city, 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 uh, manager for Oklahoma City, I tell you that William Brows is a guy that you can talk to and do business with anytime. He's a very sensible person. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Couch. Open door policy. Mr. Couch, Donna Berry, for the City of, uh, uh, City of Oklahoma City, Personnel Director, she'll tell you the same thing. But you all, I'm asking and requesting that you meet. When this man goes home, he doesn't have a leverage, retirement, okay? Let's take that at the table. When he goes home, his back is broke down, his arms are broke down, his knees are broke down. These guys, when they go home, they're beat up. Putting asphalt on the streets is a hard job. Digging up water lines is a hard job. They need someone to be able to be between them when there are safety issues, when there's shelter not out there, and you should want to know about these things. What's the best way for you to know about them? Have a spokesperson. Have a spokesperson. We have not cost you any money, we have not wasted any of your time, and most of the business that has been handled, has been handled in those departments. So, I'm saying now today, Mr. Edie, give a financial report to your other councilmen, let them know what we've cost you. But this is just a do, a divide between the workers and management, so everybody knows what's going on, so we can have a good understanding. We should be allowed to have the same understanding that police and fire have. Our union was formed by the sanitation workers in Oklahoma City. The students of Norman came up and laid down in front of the sanitation trucks, so they wouldn't pull out of the yard. That's how we got our union. Mr. Couch drove a sanitation truck. Sometimes you gotta dig from the ground up to have an understanding. My dad worked for the city for thirty-three years, and I'm gonna say something, no disrespect, but take it for what it is. In nineteen fifty-eight, he started with the city. A black man couldn't sit behind the steering wheel of a truck, he'd be terminated. This, the union came right along with the Civil Rights March. It all was hand in hand. These people have a right to have a union, and have a right to have a say in their workplace. And have a right to protect themselves, and have a right to fight for their insurance, have a right to fight for retirement. And you all should let that happen. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Troy Nelson?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Um, I come to unite on a lighter note, and I, I hope a much happier note. But nonetheless, an important matter to the citizens of Moore, I come to talk to you about Smile Face. Last week, I was not here, I was not present, but along with many others that are watching tonight, I was watching from my house last week. And I was disappointed to see, uh, a four to three vote against bringing the smiley face back to the water tower. I think that this issue, in all seriousness, speaks to the history and the traditions of Moore, and that's something that the citizens of Moore take pride in.
Before you go any further, can I read something to you? This is Title Thirty-six, United States Code, Section CRS, uh, let's see. Paragraph G, "The flag should never be placed upon it, uh, nor any part of it, nor attached to any mark, insignia, letter, word, figure, design, picture, or drawing of any nature." It's in the federal code. So, that smiley face doesn't meet the code.
Mr. Mayor, is the smiley face a part of our seal?
It is.
So, are you telling me that you're going to reconsider painting?
Right.
The water tower where the recycle center is?
I'm sorry, Mark.
The water tower where the recycle, you're considering repainting that one, and you're reconsidering painting Nineteenth Street now?
We should, yes. Yes.
We should, or you are?
We should. I, we have, I could have voted on it. I haven't talked to these guys. But we should. And let me say something else. The French flag, the Spanish flag, and the Confederate flag all flew over the state at one time, and I don't intend to put those on the water tower either.
If we have to modify the smiley face. I think I'd be okay with that, and I think, and I can't speak for others, because I haven't talked to them about modifying the smiley face. But they may be okay with it, too, as long as there's a smiley face that does not resemble a flag, you're saying that that would be okay.
Right.
Okay.
So, in, in, you could put the flag on it, then underneath it, you could put a smile, or have a nice day.
Okay, so it's a, it's a good point.
But I don't think you could, there's, there's a lot of veterans who would not like the smiley face on the tower.
Okay, I can understand that. Everyone's gonna have their opinion.
Yeah.
And if the smiley face has to be modified.
Right.
Then I'm not opposed to that. I'm not even gonna argue with you, because you obviously have done some research on this.
One of, one of the things, too, I've done, since I've been mayor, I've gone to about eight funerals, well, actually six, that people lived here in Moore. And those coffins are draped with the American flag, and the most emotional part of that ceremony is when they take that little flag, or they take that great big flag that's over that coffin. And it seems like it takes forever, and they fold it up in this little triangle, and they hold it to that guy's mama, and they say, here, on behalf of a grateful nation, you think she wants a happy face on that flag? I don't think so. And I'm not gonna put it on there. I don't care if there's fifty-six thousand people in this town that want it on there. If one of those people that have that happen to them don't, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Here tonight, sir, I'm here to talk to you about a water tower with a smiley face on it.
Right.
You've acknowledged that this water tower.
Right.
Cannot have a flag on it. I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, forget about the flag, and start thinking about the smiley face.
Right. One of the reasons we painted it last time, on this one down here about twelve years ago, is because it was less money. Part of that, just the title, Moore, in the pla, I mean, in the, uh, water tower, that was part of the bidding process. And it was bid out, and I believe it was six thousand dollars cheaper, and that's why we went with it, because we didn't have an extra six thousand dollars. And that's the only reason we didn't go with it then. So, I'm not opposed to the, to that.
Who was the mayor when we painted the seal?
That was me.
Why, sir, are you telling me that we can't do it, but you allowed it to happen?
Well, I don't know. I don't know why it happened.
You agreed to it, didn't you?
Apparently so.
So, don't come at me.
No, I, I'm just telling you the facts.
Like this is not right, okay?
Right.
You should have been aware of this before, and you made a bad decision, as we're saying.
I should. That's right. And where were you to correct me then?
I don't know, sir.
I don't either.
I was here in Moore, I can tell you that, but I may not have been eighteen years of age.
There you go.
I've lived here my whole life. So, let's find some common ground to work together.
Well, just for the record, I voted no on both items last time.
I did, and I, I've got that, and I'm coming to that in just a second, if you could give me a chance to speak.
Sure.
In the past two weeks, I've talked to approximately a hundred and fifty people through online conversations, face-to-face conversations, um, or telephone conversations. And. Those people, citizens of Moore. Want something more than the seal on our water tower. Okay, if that can't be an American smiley face, because of what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, then I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I can't speak to what they've said, okay? I didn't tell all a hundred and fifty to come down here and protest, protest tonight, because that's just not.
I believe somebody posted on a website to do just that.
There has been a movement. That has got a lot of recognition online, on Facebook.
Forty-three people, out of fifty-six thousand four hundred people. That's not a lot of people.
I can't give you the exact testing, or the exact number.
I saw the post.
I can't give you the exact number, Mr. Mayor, but the people that it has reached, I can tell you is in the thousands.
Oh, my God. I don't see a groundswell here.
Why are you being so disrespectful, Mr. Mayor?
Why are you?
I'm coming out with a, a proposal as a citizen of Moore, and you're coming at me. That's not even how I came at you. I'm wanting to work with you, however, I think you're letting this union stuff carry over into this issue, but this is a completely different issue.
I probably am. I apologize. I probably am. I apologize to you.
Okay.
Can I say something? I think in order to resolve any issue, the other two water towers in the City of Moore, just have the word Moore written on them. That would probably be the easiest, less complicated, most cost effective, effective and efficient method of correcting the issue on the water tower. And I apologize, I didn't mean to start all of the uproar that's been over the smiley face. I am not against a smiley face. That is the last thing that I am against. I am against the logo that was here back in the seventies and eighties, when we are a progressive city. We spent an entire Saturday in a city council retreat session, talking about what a progressive city looks like, smells like, feels like, sounds like. And what people's impression of it is. And I didn't feel that going back to a smiley face, SmileAmerica.com, from back in the seventies or eighties, when that logo was put up there. I didn't feel that going backwards is where the City of Moore is going, and that was my only objection against that. And what's on that ci, that wa, water tower now is just the word Moore. That's what's on there now. Let's go back and repaint it with the City of Moore.
I think. If you have an opinion on the matter, it's good, and I think as a city council, you have to listen to the citizens of Moore. I think you all know that, that you guys do that every day, every week. So, it's really, in my opinion, what the citizens want, okay? If we can't get. If we can't get a flag Smiley Face, that's okay. That's not a problem. We want something more than the seal, I think is the main thing. We want something more possibly than just Moore. Maybe, I don't know, but maybe. I've got something in a proposal right here. I didn't wanna just bring a problem to you without a solution. I think that's bad business.
And we appreciate that.
The people that I've talked to care about this issue, they do. It's something that's personal to Moore. It's not just a regular business decision. It may seem silly and stupid to some people, but this is a big issue to, to a lot of people. I promise you that. Um, last week, uh, Mister Kraus, you had made some, uh, suggestions, I think, something to the nature of you'd like to check into the cost. Is that correct? Something like that?
Yeah, yeah. Let me curious, let me curious what the cost would be, yes.
Okay. I think that's a great start, just to see, to get some bids and see what it's gonna cost to put these different things on the water tower. To make a good decision, we have to look at the financial cost of it first. I think that's good. Instead of just rushing to decision, look at the cost. Um, Mister Hamm, you had made a comment that you remembered the Smiley Face when you were younger, something like that. It's something that speaks to the history of Moore, and it, it's something that you voted for, you felt passionate about. We, we appreciated that. The citizens who want, you know, something more traditional on the water tower.
Right.
My proposal is this, and this may be out of the question now, from what Mister Lewis is saying. Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. And, and when coming up with this proposal, Ms. Griffith, I didn't look at other cities to see what they were doing. I didn't wanna look to other cities to see them as the benchmark. I didn't care about that. I said, what are we gonna do as a city of Moore? We should be the benchmark that other cities are looking to us, because we're unique. We're Moore. Keep Moore Moore. So the proposal would, in my opinion, be have different things on the towers. We don't have to put the seal on every tower to, you know, to make it right. We can keep one of them with Moore. Some people like that, keep it with Moore. We could keep one of them with the seal. That's fine. Maybe not though, I don't know. Mister Lewis says that it may not happen. That's okay, we may have to do something different now. Keep one of them with a happy face. Maybe not an American flag happy face, but a happy face. When I'm sitting in nineteenth street traffic and I look up and I see a happy face, that makes me feel better. I mean, come on, you guys know the problems with nineteenth street, right? They don't all have to be the same. We can make them different. They don't have to be the seal. We, come on, we can do this, we can work together. Mister Kraus, you also suggested something about putting it on the city's website, so that people could voice what they wanted. That's a great idea. As a citizen, I was sitting in my recliner, I almost jumped out and said, yes, that's what we need. I want a voice on the internet. I wanna just be able to click up a button and tell my city council members what I would like. That was a great idea. That's something maybe we could use in the future. It's a good idea. Let citizens vote on what they want on their water tower. So I would ask all of you to, in spite of all the stuff that's going on tonight, this is a completely different issue from the union, to carefully consider these thoughts that I've shared with you. And I would like to see this, as many other people would like to see this, on a future agenda, maybe the next agenda, to be reconsidered. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any items from the council?
Yeah, I have, uh, one, I just wanna say, Mister Eady, you have a wonderful staff. We had a Moore High School had a student education conference last week, and, uh, Deidre was so gracious as to come up and, and speak, and, uh, Todd Jensen came up and spoke about his department, what they do, and, uh, Sergeant Ballard came up, and Robert Crane from the Fire Department. And we all had a chance to talk with the high school kids about kinda what the different jobs are and what we do, and, and they did an absolutely fantastic job, and, and Deidre, there are several teenage girls out there that wanna be like you when they grow up now, so, so, so. Anyhow, um, you have an absolutely wonderful staff, and they did a fantastic job in, uh, helping shape the minds of tomorrow, so. That's it.
Anybody else?
I had just a few, uh, when I came on, council just brought to, uh, the attention to our city manager and assistant city manager, some sidewalks and streets, and those have all been repaired, uh, within a few weeks, so I'm very appreciative, and the people, and citizens of War too, I appreciate your quick response to those needs. Thank you.
I just got an email. Apparently the city seal was adopted in nineteen eighty-two, before my time, so, as long as they, it wasn't on my watch, I guess.
Anybody else? Steve?
Uh, just a couple of things, Mayor. One is, uh, we've been talking about the, um, study that, uh, we had commissioned for the, um, possibility of a railroad underpass. We received that report finally from our engineers. We're looking at it. We'll have, um, copies of that made for you all, and then probably have a presentation, uh, probably at the next city council meeting, just for you to have an understanding of what that would involve and what the costs are. Um, it's significant cost and significant, um, situations at these intersections. So anyway, I just wanted to make you aware of that, that we did finally get that, uh, in. We got our, um, plans in the last couple of days, preliminary plans for our Broadway, uh, bond issue project, the last of our projects. That'll probably start sometime this fall, but we are proceeding with that. Obviously, uh, Twelve Streets Construction has started over there, and there's, uh, some significant, uh, traffic and congestion issues over there. So again, we, um, appreciate people's patience, uh, with that, but, uh, it will be a, a dynamic project when that's, uh, done. Someone mentioned, uh, Elizabeth, I believe, mentioned earlier, the Dix Sporting Goods. That project has started, the dirt works underway on that project. We, uh, you may see some trucking of dirt, uh, that'll be coming off of city property, the city park property over, uh, off of Fourth and Telephone. We reached an agreement with the developer of the Dix to, uh, provide them some dirt off of the city property in exchange for, basically, they're gonna be building a detention pond, another detention pond on the park property over there, uh, which won't cost us anything, but will help us with detention that we need in that basin from the commercial development. And you all know there's a pending lawsuit out there that's sort of just hanging, but it's still there. So we felt like that was a good thing. But you may see trucks coming from the city park property going to the, um, Dix site, and that's the reason why that's happening, so. Uh, if you have any questions, obviously, about that, let me know. But, uh, we, we felt like that was a win-win. For us, it gets dirt that Dix needs, and it gets us a detention pond, which will be a, a, an amenity in that park, um, as we go. So that's really all I have at this point, Mayor.
People love those fishing ponds.
Yeah, and it'll be another pond. It's gonna be on the west side of the creek, in the area of the, the, uh, park that's not been really developed yet. And that's, so that'll be sort of the beginning of the development of that park. That's, uh, where I think the dog park is, uh, scheduled to be at some point in the future.
Golf park.
The golf, the frisbee golf.